Good morning. I have just a couple of housekeeping items for you before we kick it off with President Mason. Just the format for today is the presentation will happen. We'll have an opportunity for questions and answers. There's two mics in front for anybody who wants to ask a question once we get through the presentation. For anybody who's not comfortable asking in public, there are cards on the back table that you can fill out and hand to me and I'll be happy to ask your question. For those of you who are watching online, there is an opportunity for you to submit a question online. Just go to the form that's right next to the streaming site and you'll be able to submit your question and we'll get that asked. Excuse me. For the media who are in the room, there is a press availability immediately following the town hall meeting this morning in the third floor in the Penn State Room. And that takes care of my business. And with that, I'd like to introduce President Mason.
All right. Thank you, Mark, and thank you all for taking the time to be with us here today. I am pleased to welcome Regents Rastetter, Regent Downer, I believe, is in the audience, Regent McKibben, Regent Dokovich. Thank you all for being here. Executive Director Donnelly, and of course, the Deloitte team. Welcome back to campus. Thank you. Their work is important and valuable, and we support the Board's efforts in this regard and appreciate the opportunity that we'll have to reinvest any savings that we realize back into the institution. That truly is an exciting prospect. The University of Iowa places a high priority on both efficiency and effectiveness. It's certainly something that during my seven years tenure, we have placed a lot of emphasis on. We've worked together in the past several years to implement many cost savings ideas. This really helped us as we came through the flood and as we came through the recession. So we're always looking for more ideas, and I encourage all of you to share your thoughts as we go through this process. That's really important, that you share your ideas as we go through this process. Now, the task force has completed an initial analysis and has identified several areas for further study, and today you're going to hear a little bit more about those. I appreciate the task force's commitment to making sure that faculty, staff, and students are consulted and engaged throughout the process. So with that, I'm going to turn the program over to Regent McKibben. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming this morning. We'll get in the morning and afternoon before we're done here today, but most importantly, I would just reemphasize what President Mason just said to us. This is about everybody on this campus. This is about all of us going through a lifetime learning experience. This hasn't happened in the Regents at this level perhaps forever. So this is a great opportunity. So we're pleased, as Regents and Deloitte, to be here today on this campus. We were at UNI Monday. We'll be at Iowa State University next Tuesday doing the same thing. And the reason we're here for the second time today is our commitment to be at the university level, and this is a bottom-up process. This is not a process that comes down from the Regents. This is a process that's going to come up from each of our three universities. And those that are online, we appreciate you being online today, and we have a way to get questions, and those will be great that we have those today. So your input has been invaluable to this process. I can tell you that right now. In my first year as a Regent, I have probably learned more. You know, you go seven and a half years at the university level, you think you know it all, and when you get into this kind of a process, you very quickly find out that you don't. But it's critical to our universities. It's critical to our state, and it's critical to our future that we maintain the excellence that we have with the funding problems and difficulties that we have throughout not only Iowa but the nation. And higher education is facing these severe difficulties and constraints. And we want to continue to do our mission, provide great education for students, do it at a cost-effective manner, and do it in a manner that they're not leaving here with tremendous amounts of debt. So really, the status quo in this, of where we're at when we start this process is simply unacceptable. And that's what's exciting about it. That is, was it is really exciting to me, the rest of the Regents. I know it's exciting to President Mason, because when you go into change, you know it's going to be difficult. But we went into this with a highly comprehensive plan. Simply go over and put a lot of things up against the wall, and Deloitte has done that for us in Phase One, and you will hear that as we go through that today. I've been impressed with their professionalism and their experience and the team that they brought to Iowa to do this, and you're going to hear from them today. Today, we're joined by their lead team, Rick Ferraro, and Virginia Frazier, and other members of their staff to talk about not only, not as much about Phase One, we're through that, but how we're going to Phase Two. We did release, as you saw, after our UNI meeting, we released the entire 97-page document. It makes great bedtime reading for you, but it was very thorough, and it covers a lot of things. And we have, obviously, to narrow that down, but you get on to regents.iowa.gov and you will, you'll find that. A lot of those ideas and things that were in there were, they came from you. They came from the faculty, they came from the staff, they came from students. Students highly involved in this process, and I thank them for that. So the preliminary savings and the report and the process that we're at right now, we've only gone three and a half months. Frankly, at times to me at the office, it seems like it's been three and a half years, but the bottom line is, we have gone so fast and found so many things to work on right now in the aggregate that that is the really exciting part. We're going to, right now, you're going to see numbers that they're going to put up today, $30 to $80 million of annual savings. And as President Mason said, that's money that's going back into repurposing in our universities to your mission at the university level. And that's what's really exciting for the Regents. We're not clawing this money back. What have we learned when we started this process? We learned that the universities, all three of them, have dedicated faculty. They have highly engaged and motivated students, as I indicated earlier, and all three of our universities and the Regents community know the mission, and they have a clear focus on the mission of their university. And that is really exciting. We kind of intuitively knew that, but Deloitte has confirmed it. And now we have an opportunity with the savings that we will find. This is an overtime process. This isn't going away quickly, and we're not going to get something, as I used to say in the legislative process, we'd get a study and we'd shove it up on one of the cabinets and it'd get dusty. That's not our goal as Regents, is to make this a transformative, long-term process that benefits all three of our Regents' universities. And it's going to keep our universities growing along with their academic excellence that they've had, and it's going to strengthen that in the future. And right now, we'll get right to Deloitte and get right to the details of the day. I would like to introduce the Director of Deloitte, Rick Ferraro.
Thank you, Larry. Welcome, everybody. Thank you. It's very nice to be back on campus. I see a lot of familiar faces. Again, personal thanks to everyone who participated in this process. I think you will actually see some ideas that you had to hand in that were ideas we would not have developed through this process without the input we had. I'm not going to have any opening remarks, but I'll be available for Q and A, and my colleague, Virginia Frazier, will take us forward.
I'm Virginia Frazier. I'm the project manager for this initiative, and I thank everyone for having us here today back in Iowa City. It's great to be back. I've been craving Molly's cupcakes ever since we were here last time, so glad to have a chance at those again. I want to start by thanking all of the faculty, staff, and students who've been involved in this process so far. We've truly had an amazing amount of collaboration from all of the material that was gathered at the beginning of the project, all the data that people helped us collect, to all of the people who juggled their calendars to meet with us. We really wouldn't be where we are right now without all of this collaboration, and that's going to remain an important part of this project going forward. We have a lot of material to cover today, and we're excited to introduce you to the members of the Deloitte team who've been leading the analysis of the various areas of the project. And you're going to hear from them shortly as they walk through those different areas, talk about the analysis that they did in Phase One, and the opportunities that they're going to focus on in Phase Two. After sharing this information, we do look forward to engaging in dialogue with you to help answer questions and to explain things, and also to answer particular questions about different areas that you hear about. But there's going to be a lot of material to absorb today, and there are three things that I'd like you to remember as we go through this presentation. The first is around process, the second is about people, and the third is about possibilities. So regarding the process, as Regent McKibben stated, we're still very early in the process. We just completed Phase One, which was only 10 weeks long, and we just started Phase Two. We're still conducting analysis. This analysis is going to continue throughout Phase Two. Although process can seem tedious and frustrating, especially as people are anxious for results, it's important to keep this process in mind because the steps that we go through are absolutely necessary to make sure that we're helping to inform important decisions and to make sure that we have the right inputs all along the way. When we talk about people, which is the second thing I'd like you to remember, as you've heard so far, we've had a lot of interaction with people all along the way. We've met with faculty, we've met with staff, we've met with students. We've had a lot of deep and thoughtful conversations with people in the short amount of time that we've had. We're going to continue those conversations going forward. As you've heard, some of the opportunities that you've seen in the document that was recently released came directly from you as part of that bottoms-up approach, and we anticipate that moving forward, we're going to need just that much more engagement going forward. One thing I want to highlight, though, is as we go through this process and as we continue to interact with people, we're going to get more data points along the way, and the areas of opportunity are likely to change. What we've done so far is to conduct a very broad, high-level analysis of nearly every area across the university. So as we share information today and as we continue to interact with people, things will become, will go from being more high-level and broad to more precise as we continue with that analysis and we continue to meet and collaborate with people. Some areas of savings may go up, other areas may go down, and we fully expect that change as we go out. So finally, you've heard a little bit about the fact that there is some excitement about the possibilities that exist for the three universities in Iowa. Earlier this week, when we released our detailed document that captures the larger list of potential opportunities, over 150, we discovered that many of these are not just about ways that the universities can save money, but also about ways to increase effectiveness, to increase collaboration, to take money that can be reinvested in mission, and also to increase revenue across the system. As I said, not all of these opportunities will go forward. That's a very long list of opportunities that were compiled in a very short amount of time. Some things are going to be dropped, others may be added, but taken together, we do believe that these opportunities hold the promise of further strengthening Iowa's universities, both in the short term and in the longer term. You might recognize this slide. This is about our three-phase approach that we're using as part of this project. We've completed the activities for Phase One. We're going to talk about those more detail today, and you've heard now about Phase Two, where we're going to be further focusing our analysis on the opportunities that have been selected for this deeper level of analysis. There are two primary outputs of Phase Two, and you may hear us talk about those terms, so I wanted to define those, because sometimes they mean different things to different people. We want to make sure that you understand what we mean when we say these terms. The first is business cases. The outcome of Phase Two is the development of business cases. These business cases are going to include estimated costs, benefits, and implementation considerations for the opportunities that have been selected for the Phase Two analysis. These will focus on any key changes that would be required to implement the opportunity, and the key activities and even potential risks that could be associated with implementing those. Those business cases are needed to help inform important decisions ahead, and they contain both quantitative and qualitative elements. You'll also hear us use the term "implementation roadmap" or "timeline." That implementation roadmap or timeline takes all of those business cases, once we've done the analysis, and looks at them across a timeline that shows how these business cases would be sequenced over a multi-year period. This also identifies those key activities and milestones along the way and the dependencies among them. This is a very practical and tactical document that can guide the next phase of the project As we move into the timeline, we'd like to make sure that everyone has a clear idea of what things will look like in this next phase. You know the outputs. There are going to be business cases and an implementation roadmap, but how do we get there? As discussed in the past, it's important to note that the administrative and academic areas will operate under different timelines for Phase Two. I know it's a little bit hard to see on the screen, so I'm going to walk you through this. It's also available on the Board's website as well. In the administrative and academic areas, both areas will begin with more data validation, data collection, and further analysis. But the administrative areas are going to proceed throughout the summer, whereas the academic areas are going to operate very, very slowly in the summer just to prepare for the real focus on the academic area, which happens in the fall when faculty, staff, and students are fully back on campus. There's going to be a lot of collaboration and interaction along the way, and we anticipate that we will be sharing the outputs of each of these phases at the end of, an update at the end of the summer, and then an update at the end of the fall. Another thing to note is, at the bottom, you can see that implementation may start at different periods along the way. Implementation will start as soon as each area is ready, and in some cases, there may be an opportunity to start an area of implementation sooner rather than later. For example, as you'll hear about today, there are some very concrete savings opportunities that we've identified within sourcing and procurement. And our team lead, Gary Sutton, is estimating that his team will complete its analysis within a shorter time period and may be able to start implementation sooner. The ability to save money in a straightforward way by paying less for the goods and services that you use every day is one of those areas where it may make sense to move forward right away to start capturing those savings. On this slide, there are only a couple of things that I'd like to point out to you. One is that, as we've talked about in Phase One, we've used a rigorous process of analysis and data review and inputs from interviews. But the thing I'd like you to take away also is that we've engaged, as I said, with faculty, staff, and students at all three universities, over 390 interviews, 700 interviewees, and a round of town hall meetings, another one starting this past week. We've also received inputs on our websites. And I want to assure people that all of those inputs that we've received have been carefully considered as we built out the opportunity catalog that you saw earlier this week. We developed that list of opportunities based on interview inputs, data analysis against benchmarks, and past project experience. And then we worked with the Board to prioritize the areas that appear to be the most promising for Phase Two. Throughout, we identified a number of common themes across all of the three institutions. And while each campus is unique, we did identify that there are areas of commonality and similarity in aggregate. So Regent McKibben talked about dedicated and talented faculty and staff and highly engaged and motivated students. It's also very clear in every interaction that we had, the amount of focus on the mission of each institution. There's also a very strong desire to use resources effectively, as President Mason discussed as well, and there's a keen interest in continuous improvement. Throughout our discussions with faculty, staff, and students, one of the most common things that we heard is that people are trying new ways all of the time to become more efficient and effective and are really interested in additional ways to do that. There's also challenges, though, that many universities face, and we found the same in Iowa. There's limited cross-university collaboration. It certainly exists, and it certainly exists within the universities, but there are more opportunities to be able to collaborate across. There's many silos within and across the universities that can lead to overlap and duplication, sometimes in the work that people do, but also sometimes in not knowing who to go to for answers or to get things done. There's a high degree of complexity across functions, which can make processes difficult and also complex. And it's also hard to access data and use that data to drive decision-making, and this is a challenge that many universities face right now, where they attempt to use more data analytics to drive decisions. Phase One was a broad review across a number of administrative and academic areas: sourcing and procurement, finance, human resources, academic programs, facilities management, strategic space utilization, information technology, student services, construction, auxiliaries, research administration, and marketing and advertising. That's a lot of ground to cover in a short amount of time. And when you hear those names, I want you to be assured as we go through with each of our leads that you'll hear more about those areas. They're going to define those for you and talk about their observations in those areas and the opportunities they identified. As we head into Phase Two, we've narrowed those outputs and narrowed the work of the analysis that we did in Phase One to select 17 opportunities that would appear to hold the most promise. And these opportunities were selected for business case development in Phase Two, oftentimes also because they tend to be more complex and require additional detailed thoughtful analysis as we move from that broader, high-level analysis into a more focused and comprehensive look at these areas. So you can see, those initial areas now have been honed down to the areas that we're going to be talking with you about today, which include sourcing and procurement, finance, human resources, academic programs, facilities, space utilization, information technology, and student services. Some of these areas contain more than one business case, and some of these areas just contain one. But I'm going to, I am going to now pass the microphone over to our lead of sourcing and procurement, Gary Sutton, who's going to walk us through the first area and talk through some of the observations and opportunities that appear ahead. Thanks, Gary.
Good morning, everyone. As Virginia mentioned, my name is Gary Sutton, and I am the Deloitte team member who has led the sourcing and procurement effort. And so we focused on the procurement function, which is the functions that are responsible for buying goods and services on behalf of the respective universities. And there are really two main activities that are performed by the people in the procurement organizations. That would be negotiating contracts with vendors and placing orders with those vendors. The scope of Phase One was for us to really focus on the following sets of activities. Number one, we analyzed all of the expenditures for goods and services across each university. This included over $2 billion worth of expenses and more than a million and a half transactions. These expenses were then organized into about 18 broad categories, such as office supplies, furniture, utilities, travel, and food, just to name a few. We also analyzed the structure of the procurement organizations, and we analyzed the processes that are used for negotiating and placing orders with vendors. Our key Phase One observations included the following. On the strengths, what we observed was that the organizations do collaborate and look for opportunities to negotiate contracts that benefit all three universities. We also observed that leadership embraces the idea of continuous improvement of its processes for negotiating and placing orders with vendors. The challenges that we observed were that although some savings have been negotiated with vendors, there's an opportunity for more. When compared to higher education and commercial benchmarks and previous Deloitte client experience, there appears to be opportunity for an additional $16 to $40 million in incremental savings across all three universities. Examples of ways these incremental savings could be achieved include negotiating volume discounts by adding individual expense categories to form larger categories. For example, adding plumbing supplies, electrical supplies, and cleaning supplies into one broad category. Another example would be to combine medical waste, biological waste, chemical waste, and solid waste into a larger category called Waste Management and negotiate volume discounts on that larger volume. Examples like this will be explored. We also observed that when compared to benchmarks, there appears to be an underinvestment in the personnel resources and technology needed to capture and retain these higher levels of savings. And so during Phase Two, we will focus on the following. We will determine through additional analysis and additional conversations and discussions whether the savings opportunities that we've identified as a part of Phase One are valid and worth pursuing during an implementation phase. If those savings do prove to be valid, we will develop an implementation timeline for realizing those savings. And with that, I will turn the mic over to my colleague, Emily, who will talk more about finance.
Thanks, Gary. My name's Emily Todd, and I'm going to be talking today about finance and human resources. I'll start out by relaying some high-level observations that we saw across the three institutions, and then talk about the areas of focus for Phase Two. So starting off with finance, we looked at all the traditional finance areas, including things like accounts payable, treasury, the budgeting process, travel and expense processing, accounting. Some of the high-level observations we saw during Phase One were some really key strengths around the personnel that are staffing the finance organizations. We saw really dedicated staff who are really passionate about providing services to the campuses to really further the mission and vision of each institution. We saw a high level of collaboration across divisions and also across institutions to share best practices in certain areas. We also saw a strong commitment to continuous improvement, so participating in lean initiatives to see how services can be improved for customers. So those were some really great strengths we saw. Some of the challenges we observed were the decentralized organizational structure for how certain finance processes are executed. So having a lot of people involved in different processes leads oftentimes to multiple handoffs or sometimes errors that need to go back and be corrected. We also saw a need for investment in technology and automation in certain key areas to move away from paper processing for some key transactions. In terms of what we'll be reviewing in Phase Two, we want to look more closely at how finance transactions are executed and processed at the department level to understand if there's a way to improve service and increase turnaround times for certain areas. So for example, travel and expense, instead of potentially having everyone across, all the administrative assistants across campus involved in processing travel and expense, would it make sense to look at a different model where you'd have specific trained individuals who would provide those services for campus? Again, that's just an example of something we'll look at as part of Phase Two. We think this is a good opportunity to look at for finance because during our interviews in Phase One, we talked with a lot of staff who often feel very overwhelmed with the number of processes, policies, technology that they need to be up to speed on. So we think there's definitely an opportunity here to not only improve job satisfaction for these individuals, but improve services as well. So in addition to those increased qualitative benefits I just mentioned, we also think there's an opportunity to reduce the administrative burden in some of these areas that could potentially result in some savings. Our initial estimates were around $1 to $5 million steady-state savings, but those are things that will be refined further in Phase Two. So for HR, obviously, this area looks at all of the components related to employment, so whether it's recruiting and onboarding, payroll, employee data administration. We also saw some key observations that were consistent across the three organizations as well in this area. The first one, I think, is a strong sense of collaboration, again, also high utilization of HR staff, whether We also saw a lot of automation and use of self-service in recent years, which has obviously provided greater services to the community, which is a really positive strength as well. Some of the challenges we observed were some inefficient service delivery models between staff at the department level and within central HR, confusion over roles and responsibilities, and some confusion over policies and procedures. We also saw some IT resource constraints in this area at some of the institutions in terms of having the right amount of capacity to provide more automation and move away from paper processing. So we're going to look at two different areas as part of phase two. The first one is similar to what I just discussed in finance, so how are HR transactions executed at the department level, and what's the breakdown of work between kind of dedicated HR staff and administrative staff to understand if there's an opportunity to improve how services are provided. We think this is a good opportunity to look at as well because customers that we interviewed in phase one suggested that there's opportunities for service improvement, as well as best practices that can be leveraged across each institution, because we saw that at each of the three institutions, each HR function sort of excelled in different areas. So kind of looking where best practices can be seen across the three. This opportunity had an initial savings estimate of one to three million dollars that will be further refined during phase two to determine more accurate estimates. The second area that we're going to look at is the process for recruitment of professional and scientific staff. This is really looking at how do we optimize the process so that we're having quality applicants, but we're filling positions in a timely manner? And this was an opportunity that, again, we saw across all three institutions, that this was something that people really wanted to look at to see if we can improve this process system-wide. So with that, I will turn it over to Gaila to talk about the academic areas.
My name's Gaila Crache-Harso, and I'm president of KH Consulting Group. And the KH team was a subcontractor to the Deloitte team, looking at the academic programs. The academic programs are the core of why a university exists. And across the three universities, there were some 290 programs that you all deliver, which is very exciting. When we looked at the various observations and the strengths that we needed to build on, I felt it was very important that we start with what we call a strategy map, because it's a very complex area when you get into academic programs, because it is the heart of the university. You're going to see across the top what we see as the aspiration, because part of this efficiency review was also the desire of the Board of Regents to be transformational. And to us, the aspiration should be for an excellent, affordable higher education as an Iowa asset to the world. And you'll see in the top row, we start with students, and specifically student success. And we identified areas of strength and observations worthy of further exploration. Some of them clustered around high-quality, high-value university education. This had to do with completion rates, where approximately 50% or fewer of the students complete their degrees in four years. And we know that each year that's added on to the completion rate increases student debt. We looked at your outstanding student outcomes, and in many ways, you defy the trends in higher education in terms of your impressive job placement rates and your impressive post-graduate plans one year after graduation. If you look over at student access, there's a whole area there. Most of the universities have incredible programs in terms of what we would call the traditional student population, those graduating from high school who matriculate directly into a university, ages 18 to 25. You all are working with better integration of your community college transfers and articulation agreements. This university has been well-recognized across the nation for your integration of the veterans. You've done a great job of recruiting out-of-state and international students, which adds to it being an Iowa asset, both domestically and across the nation. The one area that we saw worthy of further exploration was serving what we would call the non-traditional student. These are the students over age 30 who are place-bound, they may be working, they may have earned an associate degree, and they feel it's time to come back and get a bachelor's degree. They tend not to be typical candidates, though, to want to come on campus for long periods of time. They have families, they have children, they have careers, and therefore, we feel distance education is an opportunity. At this particular university, you've done a great job of what I would call a really grassroots growing of your distance education programs. There have been faculty who have taken initiatives, there have been colleges that have taken initiatives. A lot of work has happened in what we would call the professional certification, the graduate programs. We believe there's an opportunity here to grow the distance education offerings at the undergraduate level, and this would be a revenue-generating opportunity. In the next row, you'll see instructional, research, community outreach, instruction, research, and community outreach. And this is really the faculty who have to deliver the various programs and classes in order to achieve the student's success. As an academic research university, obviously, having focused and impactful research is near and dear to the hearts of faculty. And then, given your public university role, having focused and impactful community outreach and engagement is also critical. As you move on to organizational excellence, this is what the organization needs to do to support the faculty so they can deliver and have students succeed. And this area, you'll see observations around the areas, making sure the programs are linked to the student needs and postgraduate opportunities, that there are strong enrollment management principles in terms of looking at the sequencing of courses, the use of class space, you know, a whole host of how organizations are structured, the role of the DEOs going forward. In that same row, we have empirically-based decision-making, and we believe that decisions should be based on data as input. And obviously, it's a starting point and will give us some indicators in terms of what is happening, and then you have to bring some of the qualitative judgment to bear in terms of how programs do differ and how student needs do differ and how we want to move forward. But again, we want to be evidence-based, empirically-based in making our decisions. And here, we feel there's an opportunity to look at institutional research, to really look at how to strengthen the kind of data you generate to answer some of the tough questions. The last row has to do with what we call fiscal integrity, and how can we ensure we have sufficient revenues to sustain our programs so we can have the organizational infrastructure we need, so faculty can deliver the programs? And the same applies for fiscally sustainable research. So if you look up here, you're going to see three business cases, and I'm going to talk to you about them from the bottom up. Starting with institutional research, we need good data, good information. And we're going to be working with the university here on what kind of data, how we can integrate this data, so we can look at it not just in trends in terms of classrooms or faculties or students, but the interactivity across them. Distance education, I already mentioned, in terms of it being a revenue opportunity, an opportunity to look at what you can do more in terms of undergraduate programs here within the university, and how we can look at it across the system. Which university should take the lead and what kinds of distance education programs? If it's a collaboration where programs are being offered across two or more of the universities, how do you share in the expenses and how do you share in the revenues? And then, how do you market it collectively? Are the parts greater as a whole in going forward? I say the top one, strengthen academic programs to achieve maximum competitiveness, because this applies to all of the colleges, but we're going to start here with the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences. It's a large undertaking to focus with them, but they will be the first part of phase two. I do want to take a little bit of time to talk about how the process will work, and as Virginia pointed out, we are on a different timeline for academic programs, and I'm so pleased to see the large turnout here. I was concerned with this meeting being in June. What we will be doing over the summer months is really planning on how to roll out the various working groups and the process come fall. Our thoughts are sometime probably the first week in September, we would do more like a two-hour workshop on each of these three areas and open it up to faculty to come and participate and provide more input. Starting the week of September 7th, there'll be work groups. There will be a work group here on campus looking at distance education, and then it will roll up to a system-wide one looking at distance education across the system. There will be another working group that will be looking at institutional research, both here on campus and then rolling up across the system. We will be forming probably three work groups, working groups within the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences, given its size. Each working group will have a KH team member facilitating. You're going to see a lot of me back on campus, along with my other team members. The meetings will last about two hours. They will be every other week, they will last about five weeks, they will last, we'll have five of them. So our hope is to finish them before Thanksgiving. And we will be preparing the outcome of those meetings, pulling the materials together. In early December, we'll bring the working groups together, we'll have another large forum where they can share with each other what they came up with here on this campus, and they will also be open for any of you to come and hear the ideas that are emerging. After that, we will take them to the board committee. So I have been meeting with the various constituents to find out who, how we might structure these and who might be interested in being involved, and I encourage you to talk to the dean in the College of Liberal Arts if you want to be involved. I'm meeting with the faculty senate later today, the leadership, to get their input in terms of the process. Okay? And with that, I turn it over to Pankaj.
Good morning. It's good to see so many people that I've interacted with previously. I'm Pankaj Agarwal, and my team worked on facilities and auxiliaries. Let me just tell you a little bit about what they are. So facilities management includes the cleaning, maintenance, landscaping, snow removal, functions like that, that keep the land and buildings running and operating. Auxiliaries include other services such as residence, dining, athletics, utilities, student unions, parking, transportation, multiple other functions. We studied about twenty-five different functions. So our observations were that each department had a clear understanding of the mission of each institution that it operates in, as well as how it was related and how it was supporting that mission. Also, a strong desire to effectively use resources and to conserve them, an interest in continuously improving their game. However, we did find that there is some overlap. So also, you know, so an example of overlap within the universities is that within each university, there's a central facilities management department. However, we also saw that other departments such as residence, such as dining, such as student unions have their own facilities management employees. So that's an example of overlap. But the overall dedication and commitment of staff to supporting students in their studies and through graduation was very clear. You know, one example that stood out for us was that your parking tickets are very low in fees, and maybe I'm letting the cat out of the bag, but you know, you try to not give parking tickets during exam week. So you know, that shows that you're trying to make sure that students do well. Anyway, I see some smiles, and I see some... Anyway, so we'll be developing two business cases during this phase, and one of them is to, the first one is to reduce utilities and operational costs by limiting the use of classrooms during evenings and the summer. So evening and summer programs are presently spread out across the campus in multiple facilities, and you know, this requires all buildings to have to remain functional, even in situations where buildings are only marginally occupied. We are building a business case for consolidating evening and summer classes and limiting the use of the rest of them at times in the evenings mainly, to allow for savings in energy consumption and to provide opportunities for required maintenance and renovation. The second opportunity we are building a business case for is to reduce energy consumption by investing in energy management initiatives. As we've all seen, energy prices have gone up four to five-fold in the last ten, fifteen years. We are building a business case for investing in energy management initiatives with short payback periods, so investments that pay for themselves in three to four years. Examples of these are things like sensor switches that turn lights off when there's enough daylight or when there's nobody in the room. And the objective, of course, is to save on these expensive energy dollars. So presently, each initiative is estimated to save a million to a million and a half dollars in the consumption of energy, but these estimates, again, will be greatly refined in phase two. So thank you for your time, and with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Gaila, who's going to speak about space management.
I mentioned to you that KH Consulting Group was a subcontractor working with the Deloitte team. There was one other subcontractor at Astra, and I'm here to represent Tom Shaver to share with you some of the ideas that emerged in this area. Essentially, they were looking at the allocation of faculty and the academic space. So this gets to the heart of the class schedule and the assignment of the rooms against the class schedule. And one of the things that at Astra was very impressed with is the commitment to continuous improvement and how we can do a better job of this. When we did focus groups with students, they were very concerned because they found that there was a great wealth of courses they could take, but there were a lot of them clustering around what we would call prime time. What is prime time? It's not primetime TV. It is prime time for undergraduate students, which if you are a full-time student attending, when do they like to come? They like to come at 10 o'clock so they can sleep in, and they want to sort of finish off around 3:00, correct? And so in many ways, there are some opportunities of looking at a way of spreading the class schedule out in a slightly different way, when students are even giving feedback saying the schedule's so compressed, there are courses we want to take, but they have conflicting times, so we're limited in that. When, what at Astra does, they've served about 500 colleges and universities, and they look at what are prevailing utilization rates across. And here, they saw that it was low to moderate, and that there were opportunities for improvement here and for greater oversight. You'll see up there are two opportunities. One of them is to improve the utilization of the class space through the scheduling policy, and the other one is optimize faculty allocation through a data-informed, student-centered course schedule. I talked to you about the working groups that we'll be putting together, so we will have at Astra be part of sharing their data when these working groups come together, so you all can see the kind of information they're bringing out. Probably the big rule of thumb they use is they want at least 40% of the courses to be what we call balanced. And by balanced, we mean they're not over-enrolled, where you have your capacity and they're always being stretched, and they don't want courses that are under-enrolled by at least, you know, they use thresholds of like 70%. So again, those are going to be some of the parameters that we're going to be feeding into as we look at academic programs. And next up is Shomik on information systems.
My name is Shomik Saha, and I'm the Deloitte lead for the IT work stream. The IT function consists of the different teams that develop and maintain academic and administrative systems, and they also provide infrastructure services like, say, network communications, data center operations, desktop services, help desk services, and classroom technology support. The way the IT function is currently organized is that there's a central ITS team at each university, which are supported by over 40 distributed IT teams across these three universities. So in our review of the IT function in phase one, we observed a number of positives, including the highly committed leadership, a high level of skills, a genuine spirit of continuous improvement within the IT function, and robust technology infrastructure like World University. university, which are supported by over 40 distributed IT teams across these three universities. So in our review of the IT function in Phase One, we observed a number of positives, including the highly committed leadership, a high level of skills, a genuine spirit of continuous improvement within the IT function, and robust technology infrastructure like world-class data centers and high-speed fiber optics networks. However, a few challenges that we noticed included the limited visibility of total IT spend and the need to determine the right balance between central and distributed services. We also noticed that there was potential to enhance applications and infrastructure architecture discipline. For instance, we noted that there were over 60 data server rooms and server room closets across the universities, even though the main data centers had sufficient capacity to hold most of these servers. So for Phase Two, you'll see four business cases on the screen there, which are under consideration. The first business case will review the distributed technology services across the universities and, and explore the potential for increasing collaboration within the different IT teams that I previously mentioned. The second business case, 7B, it deals with exploring service delivery models for the central ITS functions, including looking at whether some services could be adjusted to become more cost efficient or be delivered using flexible staffing models. However, um, we're, we're very clearly focused on preserving or enhancing the quality of services like help desk or, or desktop services, so that no user will feel any negative impacts from, from those changes. We estimate that these business cases taken together could lead to, roughly lead to savings of somewhere between eight and 16 million dollars annually. The third and the fourth business cases, 7C and 7D, relate to using advanced technology to lower the cost of technology operations. So 7C, for instance, is focused on reviewing the potential to streamline the systems landscape across the three universities. There are thousands of systems in operation today and some of them appear to be duplicate of like content management systems or time and attendance systems. Identifying such systems and reducing duplication over the long run can provide savings in terms of lower licensing costs, lower vendor costs, and eventually a lower applications maintenance cost for the long run. The final business case here deals with the use of innovative technologies like voice-over IP or virtual desktops. For instance, a virtual desktop is a machine that can cost roughly the, half the cost of a convention, conventional desktop, but provide the same functionality to users. So our analysis indicated that there were favorable reactions to some isolated tests of voice-over IP and virtual desktops, which is pertinent to this business case. So these, these final two business cases, we estimate have potential to unlock somewhere between three and 11 million dollars annually. I'm also leading the work for the Student Services work stream, and so I will transition to those two business cases. The Student Services function consists of the organizations, programs, and services that support the student through their entire education experience, from applying for admissions through to graduation and starting a career. So at each university, there's a core set of departments responsible for basic services such as admissions, financial aid, course registration, and academic advising. And certainly during our discussions in Phase One, we could clearly discern the strong commitment to student success that was evident. And we were also very highly impressed by the different innovative student service programs that were implemented, like high-technology classrooms, financial literacy programs, and the concept of living and learning communities. But we also identified the potential to, to improve the level of data analytics in this function to support more informed and proactive decision-making. So there are two business cases under consideration that you see on the screen out there. The first business case is focused on the online applications that are used at each of the universities. So currently, each university uses its own application. So if a student wishes to apply to all of the three universities, they have to fill multiple applications. The, the universities could potentially benefit from standardizing on an application platform for students, whether they're in-state, out-of-state, or, or international students. The second business case there is focused on more increasing the level of automation within what we call the backend business processes for admissions. So together, both of these, um, opportunities could provide several benefits. While standardizing on a, on a common application platform and using automated backend processes could, could potentially lead to some technology and some paper savings, the real benefits is really in improving the application experience for prospective students to the Iowa universities. So that brings us to the end of the updates on these different functions. I'll now hand it back to Regent McGibben for his concluding remarks on this presentation.
Once again, thank you on behalf of the Regents and, and Deloitte and the staff for coming today. And now we get to the most important part. Now we get to the listening and learning part. And that's what, that's what really excites me about all of you being here today. I'm going to recognize Mark Braun, who is going to be in charge of the listening and learning part as we move forward. Thanks, Mark.
So just a reminder that we have two mics for questions. We also have a forum online for questions. And I'm going to start it off with a question I received online. The question's for Deloitte. How do you arrive at the number of interviews you will conduct or the number of people you will talk with? For example, you have completed roughly 300 interviews with approximately 800 people, yet nearly 40,000 employees work between the three Regents institutions.
So when we look at an organization that we need to understand, we look at how it's organized and we make sure we talk to its leaders. We also make sure we talk to its key stakeholder groups. And so we've reached out to faculty groups and all of the organizations that they have. Reached out to students. So we believe that we've touched the major stakeholder groups through this process. Recognizing that it's a time-bound process, we were given a timeframe to deliver a quick overview of three universities within a limited amount of time. So we have limitations there and we just did our best to make sure we're getting the broadest reach we can and get the most facts on the table in the time allowed.
We, we have no more online questions. If someone would like to step up, uh, while you're contemplating, I'll throw a, a one out you, at you. So in the, in the full materials that were released, there were a lot of different opportunities, lot of different efficiencies. Can you identify why you picked these particular ones to focus on in Phase Two?
So in the report, you'll see that we evaluated two dimensions. One was the value, and which can be, um, you know, efficiency and dollar savings, but also be related to impact in terms of, uh, impact on the strategy and mission of the, of the institutions. And the other one was complexity, was a dimension that's really reflecting how long it takes, the amount of effort that's required to make this idea come true, uh, and the readiness of the organization to take on the idea. They might be in love with the idea and complexity goes down. They might be, gee, that's a new idea and I'm really scared by that, and complexity goes up. So we looked at those dimensions and rated every one of those opportunities and picked the highest ones. I had a discussion with the board committee about our suggestions on those, had some give and take. And actually, in the end, the board added a number of opportunities that they were interested in to pursue that originally were not on the table.
Just a reminder, since everyone seems to be shy, we do have index cards that you can fill out and I would be happy to read your questions for you.
John Lavery from the Staff Council perspective, longtime employee, father of a current student and alumnus myself of Iowa. So there's some question that was raised during our Staff Council meeting, my first one, about how the, um, Deloitte process and the, the talk about working together balances with the Board of Regents' new plan to have, uh, you know, tuition-driven decisions for our funding at the universities. So in one sense, we're seeing ourselves pitted maybe against each other in terms of the other Regents, but yet we're being asked to now cooperate with each other. How does that balance?
This, this is a good question, but this study, uh, that I am chairing was well differentiated from the other, the other study. I have been focused on operational efficiencies, academic efficiencies, tuition for students, cost of education, and, and we're the sixth highest, uh, state in the country in terms of debt of our students leaving. I view this project that I've been involved with as, as completely different than the performance-based funding that goes back to, to how the universities are functioning here. I did not spend my, you know, David Miles and their committee spent a good deal of time on that process. But if you want, if you want a segue or a connection there, I guess it's my hope as we find the savings and, and I, I've been very pleasantly pleased. When I first started this project, I think I made public that I hoped that it was six to 10x the cost of our, of our project to, to repurpose dollars to the universities themselves. And now, of course, you can see it's 30 to 80 million dollars and that's, uh, the significantly more than six to 10x. So I am hopeful that, that the effect of the project that we're doing and, and all understand that this is a, this is a two, three, four-year project when we transform and move to effectiveness and efficiency. But it's my hope that, um, this committee and the outcomes that the Regents process in this actually have a positive backfilling effect and effect on the university that minimizes what, what might be considered, and I, and I know at this university, negative effects at this university. I'm hoping my committee helps to backfill and help with that.
So I have a question from the crowd. With 50% or more undergraduate teaching hours provided by graduate teaching assistants, how have you reached out to them and not just faculty?
The teaching assistant component is something we had to take into consideration and going forward. Obviously, the faculty mix in terms of tenure, tenure track, use of adjuncts, use of teaching assistants. So indeed, we're going to have to spend time with that, particularly in Liberal Arts and Sciences in Phase Two. And let me just add, having been a TA when I was getting my PhD, very important to the institution.
So we have another question online. Has Deloitte been confirmed as the Phase Two implementation partner? I actually believe that's supposed to be Phase Three, but...
Uh, they have been confirmed as the Phase One and Phase Two. The implementation phase will be taken up as we complete Phase Two. And no, they have not been confirmed at this point in time. That will be a separate Board of Regents' decision.
I'm going to keep throwing my own questions out there unless somebody helps me out.
The person, the person carrying the mic can't ask all the questions.
I'd be happy to pass...
Didn't you get that rule when we, we came here?
No, it's my mic. I get to ask all the questions.
I, I, I would encourage, don't come to the mic and ask the questions. We, we really want to hear them. I, and there's no such thing as a, well, I won't say this, but, uh, there's no such thing as a bad question. We want to hear from you today, so, uh, I appreciate you coming up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hans Hirschman, president-elect of Staff Council here at the UI. With all the talk of standardization and collaboration, one of the words I didn't hear was consolidation. Is that one of the items that is on the table inside of this meeting?
So, um, I'm not sure what we mean by consolidation at this point per se.
Things like IT departments, human resources functions, things like that across, say, I see, I hear talk of system and things like that. So is there something about coming together and centralizing these things across all three systems?
So, uh, I would say that there's been no specific, uh, we have no specific hypotheses that that is the definite answer that you would want to pursue, but I would say there's always the possibility of that, to be, to be honest. But there's a lot of things you can do before that. And in particular, we noticed, for example, the interaction between different universities. And you think of that as a horizontal process. That's a horizontal discussion about how we work and how we work together. And those horizontal discussions can lead to standardization. Oh, we should all do it the same way. And one could argue that a lot of the horizontal discussion, they do occur, for sure. But to, but today, one could argue that they're largely, you know, if it's convenient, I guess I could standardize at my campus and we could all do it the same way. But if there's difficulty, that becomes a more complex and difficult discussion to have. And that also is where there's opportunity. So there may be some of those more difficult discussions. But deciding you're going to do something a standard way across three universities has nothing necessarily to do with organizational structure, which is what consolidation would mean, is saying we're going to put it all in one organization. And I think there's a lot of things to work on before you even think about organization, unless it's getting in the way today, would be my conclusion about the, the way you would just see the three universities operate today.
And, and one of the things that's excited me as I've looked across, again, as a Regent looking across all three universities, if there are savings that can be had in purchasing and acquisition, uh, if the cleaning fluid that we use at the three universities is purchased separately, purchased differently, I'm giving you an example that I heard from one of the people talking. If we can buy it as a Regents' organization across all three universities for, for a dollar per unit, instead of the individual universities buying it at a dollar and a half per unit, I get that example really quickly. And I, I think, Rick, you had one on that type of an example, but those are the things that, that we will look at. And that's one of the reasons that I've asked the committee and, and we will probably go to the Regents sooner than later at the, at the university level and the Regents' level to take a look at some of these things, because every month that goes by, uh, that we can't, that we put off implementation, I did say implementation was late in the, late in the fall or into the winter, uh, but there may be some things that the university folks can move forward with and, at each university in collaboration that's going to save some real dollars. And again, those are dollars that are going to be, going to be repurposed right back into your university for needs that you have. So that excites me.
Regent McGibben is thinking I have a perfect example, but I don't. But I have one that comes, that comes to mind and Gary may want to add to this. But imagine that you need sponges at three universities. And the data that Gary's team has developed could find, for example, and we do find this other universities for other similar, I'll just call that a commodity item. You find out that you're buying more ki, you're buying 17 different kinds of sponges because there's three people choosing what their user audience wants to get. They're going to market, they're getting a purchase based on their needs at one of the three universities. And then we also look at the data of who gets paid and what the price they pay. And sometimes you find between two universities, they're buying the exact same sponge at two different prices from the same vendor. Happens all the time. Okay? And then, so you have this lack of standardization saying, hey, let's all band together and talk about sponges and let's get it down from 17 to 12 different kinds of sponges that meet all our unique needs, maybe except for those special cases, we'll just put those aside. But for the ones, the big buy, we're going to standardize on the 12 different kinds of sponges. And now what you do is you say, we're going to go out to market, negotiate one contract, put out one RFP, get one price, and usually it's significantly lower. So this is because this institute, these three institutions spend so much money. There is a big opportunity to just refine this in a, you know, in the next increment of standardization and cooperation across the system to the... standardization and cooperation across the system, the system view, not an institution view. It's creating that system view that creates those horizontal discussions that lead to conclusions like this that actually produce significant amounts of money. And they don't touch staffing levels and people at all. In fact, with respect to purchasing, Gary mentioned that there's an underinvestment there. There's very likely additional funding to be spent in procurement to be able to do this, because those organizations were never built to do that in the beginning. But now we're going to upgrade them a little bit, perhaps, and that's the opportunity. That's what we're evaluating in this next phase.
My name is Angie Lamb. I've worked here at the university for almost 14 years, so I've been here for a while. And I haven't unfortunately read the 97-page document, I have to confess. That's kind of late-night reading. So maybe you can just clarify, these business cases that were presented, are these all standard across all three universities? And once you dive down into them more, will we be doing everything the same at all three universities? Or if it comes to a point where, you know, it doesn't work quite the same at U and I as it does here at Iowa, are you open to change? Or is it one big collection, one big collaboration, one big box that we're all being put into? Because I really, I mean, you and I, Iowa State, Iowa, we all three are so very different and would hope that we're not being put into a box and said this is how we're going to do it at all three. So just clarification, please. Thank you.
Thanks so much. That's a great question. I'm glad you asked it, because it is something that probably a lot of people are wondering about. To take on a couple of the different questions within your question, first off, when we, within the document that was released earlier this week and the 97 pages where we list out all these host of opportunities, some of those, many of those opportunities are system-wide, which means that we see those opportunities existing at each university, not necessarily that there's a measure of combining things in any way, shape, or form, but that we see some similar challenges that could be addressed through these areas. There are also some that are unique to particular universities. So there may be a challenge that one university is facing that the others aren't, and we see an opportunity there, and that's something we've identified in that report. In the 17 business cases that we've been talking about today, most of those are what we would call system-wide, which means that we think those same opportunities can apply to each university. What that doesn't mean, though, is that everything has to be done the exact same way at each university. We do fully appreciate the uniqueness of each university and that there are local needs that impact how service is delivered or how work gets done every day. And so as we do this business case exercise going forward, we will certainly point out and explain and analyze areas where there are unique factors and also areas where we think things could be more similar or standard. Both are important to consider, because sometimes things develop in unique ways where they don't really have to be unique, and maybe there's a way to standardize service that each university can learn from. But again, in those areas where uniqueness is important to meet local needs, we would certainly recognize that and recommend that that uniqueness or a way of delivering service be continued that way going forward. Another thing to point out is that these business cases that we're developing right now are not the design of anything that would be done in the future. So that design comes at a different stage in implementation. So all the business cases are doing right now is that cost-benefit analysis that I talked about earlier, looking at what key changes might be or looking at some implementation considerations. But there would still be work ahead if any of those business cases were selected for implementation, because that's when actually designing how a new process or a new function would operate would have to be done at some point in the future. Good question. Does that address your question?
Chuck Wieland, Staff Council President. I guess my question is, it's a little unusual to run two studies at the same time. What happens, one, if the findings come out differently or they conflict? And my second question is, is what's been approved by the board going to be incorporated into the Deloitte study? Thank you.
And the performance study looked at the state funding model in terms of state appropriations and how they've been distributed historically and putting board strategic goals behind those going forward. That performance study, as we've said, will be reviewed annually in terms of its impact and the net results. The Deloitte study is a completely independent, separate study that we felt was important in that it hadn't been done in almost 30 years, that it was important to look at it as we've had significant growth at the universities during that period of time. So as you've heard, it is a more specific set of numbers and very clearly what we've said, all the dollars that can be saved at each university will be reinvested at that university upon the recommendation of the president. So in our mind, they're two completely ones that both will develop a strategic board plan on the performance funding that the legislature can understand. And I think as importantly, or more importantly, allow the universities to focus on the Deloitte study to help have cost savings, to hold tuition down and student debt down in the future, and also take dollars that they don't have today to invest in priorities to make certain programs better or whatever that may be that's recommended.
We have another online question. What do the findings mean to staff job security for those involved in distributed IT?
What this really means is that we're looking at the potential for increasing collaboration across the distributed IT teams and potentially there is an obvious potential to do more with the same across the different, across the future years, and that is really the foundation for that business case.
We have another online question. We have very strong partnerships with our CIC partners. In some cases, if we are forced to collaborate with Regents' schools or combine services, it may hurt us within the CIC. Has this been considered at all?
Yeah, so whenever we consider any sourcing approaches, you often face constraints that you have to consider. The constraint there that was just identified, in addition to market constraints, where you may have limited suppliers, in addition to other constraints related to different types of supplier groups that are required to be used, whether it's woman-owned, minority-owned, veteran-owned suppliers, all of those constraints are necessary to be taken into consideration when evaluating different negotiation and sourcing approaches.
And we have one remaining online question. Will you consider adding a fourth phase entitled monitor and verification? I have seen these types of efficiency studies provide estimated dollar savings, but rarely monitor and verify the entire impact of the change after implementation.
The Regents, our committee and the Regents at large are committed, as I said earlier, to this process being a long-term process. This is, my expectation personally is that this process and the implementation as we move forward is going to be a two, three, four year. A lot of these things that we recognize as savings are going to take 12, 18 months to even begin to return the return on investment that we're going to make. Some of these projects that you've seen outlined here are going to require Regents' and university support for additional funding. There are some areas that we are probably going to have to repurpose and rebudget for making them the maximum efficiency that we can. You heard the computer IT, there could be purchases that we have to make of the lower-cost IT systems to have a long-term savings. But I know that the Regents' Committee, the Regents' Board is very committed to know the outcome, and it's going to be a long-term process, but I can assure folks that we will be monitoring the cost savings and as will the presidents of our universities.
As we're getting near the end, we had another online question come in, but just a reminder, if there is a question you want to ask, we are getting close to the end of the town hall. The next question is, how will you respond to the local vendors who will lose business to larger vendors when standardization results in awards to larger vendors who could handle all three universities?
Yeah, so when we think about any negotiations with any category of expenditure, we never presuppose what the outcome is going to be, whether it's a much larger supplier or a local supplier. And so the goal is never to start off with the idea that you would be reducing the suppliers that would be participating at the university. And as I mentioned earlier, the, many of the public sector organizations that are involved in procurement do have targets for, or goals for the use of, again, minority, woman-owned, small, veteran-owned suppliers. And it's always important to ensure that those goals are met and that any success in those areas is not reversed as a result of any of the negotiation or sourcing actions.
So we've had one more come in, and we'll wrap up with this one. As we work toward greater efficiencies, will sustainable practices still be considered as a significant factor in our decision-making? Obviously, the issues of energy efficiency will enhance the sustainable practices at each institution, but the question came up after the discussion of consolidating product purchasing. Would saving money on something such as cleaners purchased by all institutions be more important than maintaining and increasing our sustainable practices? How will these issues be evaluated, or how will the method of evaluation be developed?
So I'll start off with the component of that that speaks to the suppliers. Maybe Pankash may have a different or an alternate or additional view about the sustainability question. But having programs that involve sustainability are very important, and I'll put sustainability within the same context of other programs that are important to the universities that there is an interest in retaining. So if sustainability with respect to clean products is a very important issue, those very important issues will have to continue to be preserved as a part of any negotiations or any sourcing efforts with suppliers.
Just add to that, you know, we have two opportunities up there related to energy management savings, utility cost savings. So we do look through a lens through a very much of a green sustainability lens, if you want to call it that. And this is a typical constraint in any kind of sourcing and procurement effort. You need to be consistent with the culture, the values, the operational methods used at any organization that you're doing any sourcing and procurement work, because that organization is the rock bed of how it works, and you can't, you're not going to go change that to get a one penny different per, you know, eraser you're going to go buy at the store. So you need to recognize that that's an operating constraint, and our experience is that organizations have this whole spectrum of how aggressive they are on those fronts. We've worked with that full spectrum, and, you know, our estimate of the savings are based on our experience in working with that full spectrum. So we don't see that as being, you know, a very difficult constraint to work with. It does take some thought, but that's how we'll deal with it.
Okay, I've been asked to wrap up, so let me first say thank you to all of you for coming today. Thanks especially to those who ask questions. We very much appreciate that. And thanks again to the Regents and the team up here who are working hard on this issue.